County Commissioner's Work Session, this is our second today for Wednesday, July 21st, 2021. It's 2:32 PM. My name is Ty Vencer, Chair of the Board. To my left is the Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and to my right is Commissioner Caroline Mejia. To Commissioner Edwards, did I get that wrong? To my left? No, that's right. To Commissioner Edwards' left is the County Manager, Mira Chavez, and to Commissioner Mejia's right is Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. We have our Public Works team here because we're talking about the Transportation Improvement Program Annual Update. This is informational. The public can follow along on our live stream YouTube channel. We're scheduled till 4:00 PM if we need that. And I'm going to just turn it to staff to walk us through what we need to cover in this presentation.
Let me share this screen. I gave you the commands. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you again for your time. I'm still Scott Lindblom, County Engineer. We just got done with the CIP briefing just a few moments ago. And in that, as you recall, we did go through the projects that were identified in the CIP for the 2022-2023 years. And so during this tip presentation, we will not be going through projects themselves, but really, again, focus on the Transportation Improvement Program document itself. There's been a couple of changes to the format of it that we think will make it easier. I'll walk through some of those. And then I'll walk through kind of chapter by chapter at somewhat of a high level as to why each chapter is important and different in its own way. So first and foremost, the tip is a planning document for the county's transportation system. One of the things that the county commissioners are required to do each year before adoption of the budget, required by RCW and WAC to adopt a comprehensive transportation improvement program for the following six years. So last year, I was back here about this time, and for the past 100 years or so, some county engineers have been presenting to some county commissioner a similar program, although I think it's changed a bit over time. As county engineer, I'm also required to submit an annual or recommended annual road program for laying out construction and maintaining all of the county roads. That annual road program is essentially the first year of the tip, so the first of the six-year transportation improvement plan. Adoption of the tip and the annual road program authorizes the county engineer to approve right-of-way plans for specific projects that are in the tip and in the annual road program. Here at WAC 13620, the county engineer is also required to have all county bridges regularly inspected and to provide you an annual bridge report. And it also requires staff to consult this bridge report in preparation of the tip. And I'll be talking about the bridge report in just a bit, which is included in the tip as Chapter Eight. But before we get into the meat of it, next slide, please. I want to walk you through a different look for the tip. So we've updated how it looks in an effort to really make it more user-friendly, to save time, and to make it a bit more of a concise document. And I've got a copy of it right here, but I don't expect you to see this, but just, you know, for the visual, this is what it will look like. The big thing you'll notice is its landscape and landscape or portrait actually does have a big impact because it allows us to consolidate some of those tables that used to be split onto two pages. So what previously took two or three pages to produce, we can now do in one, resulting with 60% reduction in the size of the document, which saves staff time and also the resources just to print it. Next slide, please. The new format is also easier to read. So when you go through it, hopefully you'll find that it's easier to read. You can actually read it with a tablet, or if you've got really good eyes or readers on it, you can actually read it on your phone as well. So that's going to make it more accessible in different platforms for different types of viewers, really trying to cater to the people that might be using the document or viewing the document today. And in addition to the format changes, we've also updated the maps to try to make them a bit easier to read. So now the maps are larger, a bit more information. And as you can see in the slides here, we've included not only the location of the project, but tried to show the type of the projects. Looking at the map, you don't have to, it might save you a trip to figure out what that red dot means. Now you're going to see a fish icon in a spot would mean a fish passage project in that particular area. So we'd love your feedback as you go through this, or certainly the public's feedback. Hopefully, the changes will make it a more user-friendly, readable document. And when we look at the project pages, this is the last bit of the tip that we've changed. So this is where we have the details of each project. So they're in line to the standard reporting form for the document, and also we limited some duplicating efforts we had when we would submit this document to other organizations for grant funding. We've nested project narratives back into the document, making the process more streamlined, and again, hopefully easier access for the public. Okay, oh, you're right there. Great. So now I'll start to go through the chapter by chapter of the document itself. And I'm not going to go through each item in there, but really provide you an idea of what's in each chapter and give you some ideas of where to look for some of the important information that's in the document. So Chapter One is the summary of all the legal and regulatory requirements that guide our program. All that is included in Chapter One. It includes our new road and bridge construction maintenance needs. The tip also includes, again, as I mentioned, looking out over the next six years. It has the requirement for creating a county road fund, also identifies the requirement for us to have a priority array. Some of the other departments talked about how they prioritize projects. We are required to prioritize all the transportation projects. It's called out in Chapter One as to why we do that. And we do have a very robust and ever-refining tool that we use to prioritize all of our projects, which I'll touch on in just a little bit. And here's where the requirement is for bridge inspection programs. And again, without belaboring it more, it's really what guides our program. It's all the requirements we have. Moving on to Chapter Two, it goes through a description of what our funding sources are. And it's important to note as we go through this, the numbers in this draft tip document are drafted at this point, so you'll be given final numbers as we present the budget, Public Works budget later on this year. So as you can imagine, and as we've talked about, funding for transportation comes from a variety of sources. We get a lot of our funding for operation and maintenance from the road levy, the property tax, but we also get the county's portion of the gas tax. But we rely heavily on federal and state grants for the success of our program. Typically, most of our grants require a match of 10 to 20%. And as I touched on earlier, sometimes we might put in more than the minimum just to make our grant a bit more competitive. And the two projects that are referenced this morning were the NHS grants where we put in a bit more than the minimum required batch, but in return, we got some very robust grant funds for those. We rely heavily on REIT for our Fish Passage Enhancement Program. And as we've had several discussions on traffic impact fees, they're a really key component of the funding to make sure our projects are able to meet the growing demands of our community. Chapter Three, and again, here's where it's going to be really important to remember the numbers are drafted, but in the final tip document, you will see the six-year plan of our revenues and expenditures for the road fund. Part of that, you'll see the traffic impact fee annual report. We'll see the estimates for the first couple of years, the revenues and expenditures, and also look at the construction fund. You may recall that the road fund is split into two different funds. It's the, we'll call it Fund 1190, which is our operation and maintenance, and Fund 3010, which is our construction fund. So when I mentioned that the construction fund is, as mentioned in the fourth bullet up there, that is identified and called out in Chapter Three of the tip.
So just for clarification, though, those dates, it should read 2022-2024?
Yes, it should, but...
And then the fuel gas is further. Okay. So it looks like we need to...
Need to update that.
Yeah.
What dictates whether mine goes into 1190 or 1320?
The revenue coming in from road levy and gas tax goes into Fund 1190. And then it's the discretion of the county whether or how much goes into the capital construction fund each year. That can vary. And then it's varied over the years. I think now it's a $1.2 million transfer or so.
Well, I think we've adjusted it down a little bit as we've asked for more money to, with that idea of trying to take care of what we have. So while we get to leverage road fund dollars for capital projects, we also know that it costs us less if we take care of them sooner and do more maintenance type of work than letting them deteriorate. So, but it's a balance that we try to strike between.
So we have that. Sounds like we have that already.
Yes, the 3010 is the construct.
But it's not like the law dictates that so much tax goes here and so much there.
No. And it's one of those budget line items you see where it's a transfer, where you're moving money from one fund to another and then spending it in that second fund. That's effectively what we do to move money to the construction.
And I touched on the traffic impact fees, and I just want to really highlight, next year, the traffic impact fees will be used to support six active projects. A couple down in Grand Mountain, the Old 99 at Tidley Bridge Intersections, the Sargent Road Roundabout, Johnson Point and Hawks Prairie Roundabout, Little Rock Road and 113th, the Yelm Highway and Ruddy Road intersection, which will start construction this year, spill into next year, and finally, the Marvin Road border as well. Chapter Four, thank you. Here's where we talk about our programs and prioritization. Programs really help us define the priorities of the road system and public works, and both the operations side and the capital side. And so the programs I mentioned, I mentioned a few minutes ago, the bridges, culverts, ADA, et cetera. When we look at projects that are identified, and those projects come to us either through our operation and maintenance staff where they say, "The road is getting in such bad shape, we can't just maintain it anymore because the pavement condition is too bad," or "A bridge reaches a certain condition where it's not feasible to keep maintaining," or sometimes the public brings things to our attention. Each of those will come in really as a program. So our County Road Safety Program identified safety opportunities. We have made safety improvements. So when we look at our safety program, we'll prioritize all those issues and come up with the top couple, the top highest priority safety products. We do that for culverts. We do that for mobility. We do that for all these different programs. So then we have about eight programs, each with a number one priority. And so we then have a tool to look at, how do we balance the number one priority for safety, the number one priority for bridges? So it's a very robust process we go through each and every year to highlight and really prioritize the products we do. A lot of them are contingent on funding, but I think it's been fairly successful in how we've done that. And again, we are required to have a priority array when we use our county road fund, and again, we've been quite successful in doing that. Number five, this, or Chapter Five, rather, is the annual road program. And as I mentioned, this is a specific thing called out that we are required to do each year. And again, it's really the first year of our six-year program. This highlights, in this case, the projects that we'll be working on in 2022. Any changes to this, once it's adopted, have to be approved by unanimous vote of the board. You may recall, in January of this year, we came to you, Public Works came to you to request such a change on a project down in the Grand Mountain area. It was the 183rd Avenue. It was a road road upgrade project where the change we had to go through was a change to the description of the project. So we had the project in our tip, but the County Road Board asked us to make this change. And the timing was odd because we had to do it late January, but we went through a very rapid process with great assistance from our Public Works Director and our County Manager to get this before the board. And it did take a unanimous vote to make the change. And it's not unusual, or it's not, I mean, that was a fairly fast-paced, but sometimes other changes can come up that require immediate attention that perhaps can't wait until the following year to get it on the program. So we've had projects, an emergency project, we might come to you next year that, we could have a landslide that takes out a road. So to enable us to work on it, we might come to you and say, you know, we ask your consideration to add a project to the annual road program. Typically, it doesn't happen, but it can, and it's happened before. I'm sure it will happen again. So when we do that, the reason we come to you and ask you that is because it's not on our program. Without it being on our program, we can't work on it.
I think before Scott moves on, it's important to note, he kind of slid past it, that any change to this program requires a unanimous vote of the board. So if any one of you were not in favor, then we couldn't go forward.
So if the sand shit would have come at a different time, there would have been no sand shit. Then we'd have 20 more miles of surface drove.
And throughout the year, there's different times when the county engineers got to submit different documentation and different reports to the County Road Administration Board. The annual road program is one of those that we do the program, and then April 1st of every year, we submit the annual construction report, which is really a check back in and you did your program, and here's what you actually did. Did you add any new projects? And we'll be able to say, yes, we added a project, but here's how the board, here's how the board did that. So we have to kind of make that paper trail every time we'll do a report. And Chapter Six, wonderful. So Chapter Six is, I guess you might think is the meat of the tip. It's really the six years of projects laying out really all those projects and programs we anticipate working on in the next six years. And again, the project we presented to you earlier today. And it's important to note in this document, or in this chapter, you'll see several projects with a $50,000 expenditure out at year six, at the very end of the six-year program. We put those on there with the hope that we might be getting or applying for grant money, often with some grant funding sources, to be eligible to receive the grant. The project has got to be on the tip itself. So when you see a, I believe this year, we have a $50,000 expenditure out at year six, that checks the box to say, yes, it's an important project to us. It adds value to our road system, or it addresses a need. But that placeholder dollar amount at year six is not necessarily a commitment yet that we are ready to start working on it right now. It's like, to be eligible for the grant, we can say, yes, it's on our tip. There it is right there in year, I guess it'd be 2027. If we get funding, what you'll see is Public Works requests to move that project forward, to advance it forward, often to meet the timeframe for the grant, or if we've got the resources to take it on earlier. And one other note on there, on that table on Chapter Six, you'll notice that there's a rank on the left, and this reflects the prioritization that I was just talking about a few minutes ago. These projects are ranked one through, I believe it's 49 right now, 48, the highest priority project. We have right now is the Mullen Road, which we're wrapping up in this calendar year. So then the last project, number 48, I forget what 48 is, but they are in the priority order. So it's not just a number assigned, it's based on the actual priority of the road system. Chapter Six, you'll see, also summarizes the changes from the previous year, whether it's projects that we added, projects that were removed or completed. And in this case, we've got 14 projects that were added, either because we received or new grants, or applied for new grants. We also removed 14 projects, or a couple we bumped back to the 20-year capacity projects list. So that is still in our tip. It's an important project to us, but we don't have any expectation that we'll work on it in the next six years. Moving on to Chapter Seven, so the capacity projects list. This is, through a couple briefings we've had on the traffic impact fees, we often reference this longer-term list of projects. And that was kind of the basis for generating the costs for all those, the 20-year project list that we referenced in the traffic impact fee briefings we had. That same list is reflected here in the tip. It looks at not only, again, the next six years, but really looking at 20 years. When we update the traffic impact fees at some point in the future, we'll again go back and adjust this list as well. And then finally, Chapter Eight, I also mentioned the bridge report, and this is a, really the key document that we have to assess, or that we report on the assessment of all of our bridges. We've got 144 bridges that the county is responsible for, and it's a mix of, actually, it's a mix of big bridges, short bridges. Some bridges are, I'm going to make actually a key distinction here. We are eligible for federal funding on bridges that are longer than 20 feet. We've got a lot of bridges that are shorter than 20 feet, and perhaps you've heard the term short-span bridges. We've got, and looking down at my notes here, we've got 20, I believe, 20 bridges that are shorter than 20 feet, which makes them not eligible for federal funding, which is the key source for our bridge program.
How many bridges? I'm sorry.
I'm going to get you the real number. I was, I'll get you the real number, and I've got it right in my document, but I'll make it how to get that number. Oh, great.
But it's 144 total.
144 total, yeah. What you might see is that that number has been increasing the last few years as we've added a few bridges with our Fish Passage Program. We've also been adding short-span bridges to this inventory. We added a couple as, a couple of bridges with the Elbow Lake Creek, Beaver Creek at Case Road projects, as well as the Salmon Creek and Jones Road. We've got, so 102 bridges exceed 20 feet.
So doing the math, 144 minus 102.
Engineers.
There you go.
Don't let that be a joke.
That should be, that should be.
I didn't want to steal the glory for you.
So 102 of our 144 bridges are eligible for federal funding, meaning 142 are not eligible for federal funding. And the reason that's really important is that money will end up coming most likely from road fund to support those bridges. We've got a key example, our T2 Bridge, which is a timber trestle bridge on Tilly Road, just south of Maytown Road. It's shorter than 20 feet, which makes it not eligible again for federal funding. And that bridge is like 19 feet and change, and when we replace it, and we'll have to replace it soon, we'll be, we're doing a report on that now to figure out what it might cost. But it's going to be several million dollars. Even a relatively short bridge will be, you know, $2 million. We're thinking that that one might be more than just a $2 million bridge. We'll let you know more probably at this time next year. But that would have to come from road fund unless we find other sources. With our bridge program, we're required to inspect all of our reportable bridges. Again, those 102 bridges, we're required to inspect all those at least once every one to two years. And I say one to two years because there's, two years is the maximum interval. There's some we are inspecting on a more frequent basis because we're concerned about their condition, or their condition is such that it warrants more frequent inspections. And we completed 68 bridge inspections last year. Seventeen of our bridges, of our 144 bridges, have exceeded their theoretical design life of 75 years. 10 of those were built in the 1920s or earlier. Four of our bridges have a similar design as the Elfor Bridge on Little Rock Road, the original one. And I, don't recall if Commissioner Edwards was here at the time.
I was here.
But that was a bridge that was a gift from the DOT years ago. It used to be a state-owned bridge. It was transferred to the county. I'm not sure when, but we had no design plans for it. We had no records on it, other than we had a bridge.
No rebar, right?
And there was, well, yeah, it was concerning when the bridge cracked. Your inspectors looked in the crack and they didn't see any steel reinforcement in the bridge. The good news is it made demolition of the bridge really quick and easy. But the bad news was it was, it was in need of replacement. We had to do an emergency closure on it. Thanks to the awesome staff, we were able to, we got lucky and got funding, design permitted, replaced the bridge within about a nine-month time span, a Herculean effort. But our concern going forward is we have four more bridges where we suspect there's no steel in them either. These are short-span bridges, and as I mentioned a moment ago, there's no federal funding for short-span bridges. So it's on those bridges we've stepped up. We've increased the frequency of monitoring to make sure that if cracks develop, we can address those, and just to make sure that we stay on top of those, to make sure bridges continue to be safe. But it's certainly something that we are aware of and tracking. We also do more frequent inspections on, I mentioned the Tilly Road Bridge, the T2 Bridge, Holmes Island Road Bridge, the Maze Road Bridge, and McLean Bridge on Delphi Road. Once we do all of our inspections, we send those reports to the DOT to verify compliance with the national bridge system, which were required, excuse me, to participate with. We have one bridge in our inventory that's weight-restricted. That's the Holmes Island Road Bridge. I'm happy to report that the Reader Road Bridge, which we recently completed this year, eliminated the county's only structurally deficient bridge. So right now, we have zero structurally deficient bridges, which was tremendous. Later on this year, staff will be recommending to the board to place a weight restriction on the O-12 Bridge. That's the bridge over the Yelm Highway by the railroad tracks. That's the bridge over the Yelm Highway by the railroad tracks. And at that same time, what you'll see is a request to remove the weight restriction on the Reader Road Bridge I just mentioned, because we have a new bridge there. The public hearing for the weight restriction is scheduled for August 24th to consider public comment for that. And of course, being an engineer, and I would love to go into some great detail, but I will, I will keep it at a bit high level. And if you want more detail, you've got a couple engineers here that would love to dive deep with you. But for the sake of, you know, your time and to respect your time, let's go through it again at a high level. We also look at the scour, we do scour evaluations of our bridge, that's to make sure that the foundations aren't washing out. You've got sixteen bridges that are, we consider scour critical, so we are really stepping up our efforts on that. Are bridges that are functionally obsolete, those are bridges that are, the condition is fine, but they were built to standards a long time ago. So that might be a bridge where you have nice wide roads coming in, and then the road itself necks down with bridges, then just past the bridge it widens back out. That was a bridge that was built, the road is probably, say a two-lane bridge is built, the road is two-lane, but then the road expanded to three-lane or four-lane. But because bridges are so expensive, often we don't upgrade the bridge.
So we've got one of those at the seat of town water, a couple of them.
We did, and that was a brilliant tenement station, I must say. That was the H-two bridge down by the Pioneer Park.
Pioneer Park.
So we've got twenty such bridges that are functionally obsolete. And I mentioned we have zero structurally deficient bridges now. So we've got a quantitative way to look at our bridges to rate them every year. Again, here's where, if you want detail, we can bore you silly, but we do have a systematic way to do that. It develops a score, a number which we can use then. If the score is high, that means the bridge is in fairly good shape. The lower the number is, the worse it is. And you have to reach a certain threshold before you're eligible for federal funding. We've got two bridges that qualify for federal bridge replacement funds. The Holmes Island Bridge and the Yelm Highway Bridge, the O-12 Bridge I just mentioned. But an important caveat is just because they're eligible, it does not mean that there's funding for them. We apply, we're very proactive in applying for money. We've also got thirty-three bridges that qualify for a different level of federal funding, that's rehabilitation funding. So thirty-three bridges are at a condition that federal government doesn't consider funding for replacement, but they'll consider funding for some rehabilitation. This past year, we completed repairs on the Deschutes River Trestle. Earlier in the year, we completed repairs on the N-one Bridge, which we came to you, I believe it was first part of this year, was the Nisqually Cut Off Bridge down by, down by the Nisqually River in I-5. We did complete those repairs. And that, that bridge repair will be included in next year's bridge report as we just completed this year. We'll be doing upcoming work at the Steamboat Island Road Bridge to repair cracking and prevent some delamination. And our Black Lake Belmore Bridge, I just talked about a few minutes ago, with the approach repairs that we need. And with that, I mean, oh, lastly, our replacement priorities for us, we're really putting a hybrid in the Yelm Highway Bridge. The estimated cost on that is about sixteen million dollars to replace that bridge, and at this point, we have no funding for it. The Little Rock Road Bridge, which is the L-five Bridge, we did, that was part of our Little Rock Road and One Thirteen Avenue. We do have funding for that. We do plan to replace that with some intersection improvements in the next.
That's one of those cement bridges too, isn't it?
It is.
With no steel.
Yeah, cement and no steel.
I've got a solution for you.
Finally, our Tilly Road Bridge, the T-two Bridge on Tilly just south of Maytown, we'll be doing, finishing an alternative analysis this year. So the next steps then, the next steps in the process for this, because the board is required to adopt this before the budget, between now and then, once the board is ready, Public Works can submit an AIS, schedule a public hearing as we finalize the tip document itself with, I guess, the last edits and such. So with that, we can dive deep into details. And nothing can make engineers happier, but again, I want to respect your time and dive as deep as you want, or to as high level as you'd like.
So where's the tip available? Is it online? Is it, is there a paper format of it?
We can provide it electronically or give you a paper, whatever you'd like. Or both, actually.
They usually allow paper copies for the commissioner's office. Can you do that?
Absolutely. We'll give you draft copies. And again, certainly that would be helpful, then you see them paper. I'm a paper person too.
You know those thirty-three bridges that you're you're only allowed to do a patch job on? When the army went into France more than fifty years ago, they had to redo a bunch of bridges. And I was an engineer in the army, by the way, not to your degree. But anyway, talking to all those old engineers that went over there later, some of the bridges that they rebuilt with airfield landing strips, which are corrugated metal pieces with holes in them, are still in place today, seventy-some years later. So things do last for a long time, and those were built for heavy objects like big trucks and tanks and stuff. Although the tank displacement is actually less than a truck, you know, on your square footage. But anyway, I think we should try to be innovative and fix things somehow like that when we can't get money for it. And it would keep it from deteriorating anymore. So that's just one issue, but your Public Works Director found a minor issue and she went, I don't, I don't want her to outdo me. So on, I think it's on page five, you talk about sixty percent left pages, but it's only thirty percent less paper surface.
Yeah, I just have one question. Can you, from whatever side, I think you've got the document in front of you. What is the size of the, of the next year's program?
Oh, yeah.
In terms of the overall funding? And out of that, how much is county money, tip or road fund versus grants?
Great question. So for 2022, our total funding is about twenty million dollars. Of that, we are looking at about eight million dollars of county road fund.
County road?
County road fund. One point, rounding up to one point three million dollars of impact fees, five point eight million dollars of grants, and four point nine million dollars of real estate excise tax.
Draft, 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 draft.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But just to give a sense of the magnitude to the board.
We'll have better numbers in August, but.
I just want to make sure that we're proactive with securing grants.
Absolutely.
And that shows really an attempt as to how we continue to look for opportunities.
Yeah, and, and I mean, Jennifer's point is spot on. These, these are really draft, but I think proportionally, it really shows that, you know, we're not, we're not eighty percent using road fund money. You know, a big chunk of it is not county road fund. So impact fees play a key part of that, and they will, and this year, this showed one point two seven, but 2022, it will be different, absolutely. And that's what you'll see when you look at the final.
Well, that's part of the strategy too, that we were building up the impact fee money for the Marvin Road.
Absolutely.
How, how do you account for the placeholder money? You know, and then the sixth year, fifty thousand here, fifty thousand there. You know, you're not going to get to it, but you might get to it, so you have to have something in place. So how do you account for it? Because there's no money there. I mean, it's just a number on paper. It's really not money that I'm aware of.
It is, and next year, what you might see at this time is that same fifty thousand dollars.
Right, but it's really not, it's really not, it's, it says fifty thousand, but where does that get accounted for? Because it's really not there.
Yeah, it'll show up in the ten-year financial plan for, for the Public Works, for the road fund.
Yeah, I know, but where, I mean, you're, you could put down ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
And so it's really not there, but where does it get categorized as, as a line item in total?
So when we're looking at balancing out our revenues and expenditures over, and Andy Roblin might be having a more concise answer than I perhaps.
I'm understanding what you're asking.
Well, because we have a number that goes along with that. It doesn't matter if it's ten thousand dollars per project or a hundred thousand dollars, doesn't make any difference. It's really not there, and how does that, how does that dollar amount fit into the budget?
It is there. It is there. The tip is financially constrained, so at this point, we would say it's probably county road fund money. But it is, it, that money exists, that fifty thousand.
So that total is going to be sitting there somewhere.
Reserved or earmarked, if you will.
Earmark.
In accordance with the plan that the board approves, and it's so far in the future.
You just projected it in the road fund anyway.
Right.
But couldn't you?
But this is why we, during the budget process, we review with you every fund's financial plan, including the future earmarks that you're making. You appropriate for the current period, but you plan for the future.
But couldn't the three county commissioners agree on an expenditure to keep within the law and utilize, instead of having fifty thousand on each one of those, we'll cut it down to ten thousand, and we're going to take that money and deal with this project.
So there's a, there, you might be able to do that far out in the future, but you see there are six years in the TIP that align with the six years in the CIP. And the state law regarding the CIP requires that we put reasonable estimates in for all of the projects in the plan. Because even though it is only a plan, it's not a budget, you are required to assess whether or not you're going to have sufficient financial resources to fund the items in the plan. And if you don't, then there's more things that the county is required to do. So even the fifty thousand makes me go, yeah, but if you were to drop that down to much less than that, I would be raising the cost.
It ought to be a hundred dollars.
Well, it should be something more realistic, and we have a way to assess ballparks, but that's all they are. So
There's not an auditor process.
You walk a fine line. Yes, there is an audit process.
Say ten percent or twenty percent?
No, it's not, it's vague enough for us to get away with this, let's say.
Got legal room.
But the law does say that you need to make a reasonable estimate of the cost of these.
But also what I think was stated is the document is financially constrained, meaning if you see, that's what I asked the first year, is about twenty-two million dollars. If you see the next five years of the TIP, that drops significantly. And that is a reason why, because we don't account for any future potential grants. Because we only can account for the grants we have received. And that's what, and that you cannot say in
It's not coming again next year.
Yeah, it's in, in year four of the TIP, you know, we cannot state that we're going to be receiving a million dollars of federal funds. Because that will be unrealistic, because we don't.
Because it's project specific, right?
I was assuming from what Scott described, that you were talking about like planning money. Like you, there's a big project you might want to do, and you want, you want to be able to explore the feasibility. I thought that's kind of where the fifty thousand was just kind of a, kind of a placeholder, planning for a project kind of thing, because you don't know if you're going to go forward, and if you do, then you'll have the obligation to find the funding or account for it. Once you've made that decision, that's not right.
It's, that's part of it, but
I was just reading it.
Really, the, the items are on the list the way they are, because as Scott said, if it's not on the list, we can't do it, and if it's not on the list, there are grant opportunities that are close to us. So to be able to apply for grants for some of these projects, it takes time to get the grants, and then it takes time to actually get the money from the grants. If we put them on the list, even with just that fifty thousand placeholder in the future, and a grant comes along, then they can apply for that, and if we're successful, we can move that project up and put a more realistic number on it.
The commissioner's message is correct though, meaning the fifty thousand dollars for future projects is allocated on the planning phase of the project.
It is. It would be part of the planning.
Because we have all those phases, and if you're not going to start it till 2027.
Even fifty thousand is not enough to do all of the planning.
It's correct. It's, it's put in the planning phase, because the fifty thousand dollars will now be in the construction phase.
Right.
So
Which would be beyond, the construction phase would be beyond the, the years that are reflected in the chart.
Most of the time, yeah, yeah.
But those thirty-three bridges could be fixed easily for fifty thousand a piece.
And with the, with the federal infrastructure bill, you may see a lot of these projects moving up.
And if we have a significant influx of infrastructure federal money, we need to look like resources.
I was just going to say, just as we've looked at like our stormwater, there was, I mean, our stormwater team was, they had twenty-five percent staffing levels. So when we look at why haven't our restoration projects moved forward, I mean, that's, that's a piece of it too. So as we get the money, we have to have people to be able to do that work.
And I believe you're going to be addressing a little bit of the stormwater as part of the resources of the proposal for next year, right?
Correct. But that doesn't help
Right.
the engineering group, right?
Right.
You'll be able to ship some, but I mean, there's still those challenges. If that amount of money comes through, and then construction, and then real estate services, and then survey, I mean, all of those students.
Think about it, and if this large infrastructure act passes at the federal government, as we see the micro cost models here in Washington is still related to Blake, and the need for hiring attorneys to process the Blake decision and the backlog, think about how much engineering staff will be needed when this piece of the infrastructure package passes.
And if you say engineering, including all of those groups, right?
So and there's going to be a demand for
Right. So in a group that's already hard to recruit for, that demand is going to make it even more difficult for us to fill our FTEs. But we will need them to be able to take advantage of that money.
I think that's even more important, why we should work hard on retention.
I agree. We've just been having a conversation about that.
We're going to have a brainstorming sessions with, you know, directors to come, who can implement strategies to bring to the board. Recruitment and retention.
Sure, sure.
Anyone else? Me, Dad, Teresa, good to see you, Rick.
Why can't I not? You have something to say.
I always have something to say. I just want to argue with them about this fifty thousand bridges. Okay, are we good then?
We're good.
All right.